Hi, this is Erin. Can you hear and see me okay?
I'm just 18, 19.
Correct.
I was just trying to have space.
You're 20.
Right, so what, I couldn't hear you.
All right. I think we're ready to get started. Yes?
Recording.
Recording, great. All right, hello everybody and welcome to the Mount Mansfield Unified Union School Board meeting for Monday, May 13. We always start the meeting with an agenda review, role call, and a role call. Today, I need to start the meeting with a moment of silence. We had a really sad event happen and one of the folks who works in our central office passed away this morning. And it's been a real challenge for folks in the district. And so I just want to send condolences out to Sam Hill's family and just take a moment of silence with the board. Thank you. Okay, so reviewing the agenda, we start with community comments. We have a report from the Mount Mansfield principal. We have a policy that we are warning this week that we can approve at our next meeting. Updated proficiency-based graduation requirements. Then we have a monitoring report on the 2.2 policy. Superintendent's report. We'll do a quick discussion about the V S B A resolutions so that we can be prepared to act on those at a later meeting. Same thing with the superintendent evaluation. We'll have a quick discussion so that at our next meeting, we can have an executive session to talk about that. Get an update from our committee, see where everyone is doing, how all those committees are working out. And then we will approve our minutes. And if there's any other business, we'll pop that in at the end. Anybody have any modifications, changes, adjustments? So we do have a board member here who has been, who is being... Sent, I've lost my words, I'm sorry.
Eighty.
A new board member to fill the open seat in Underhill, but we weren't able to get that on the agenda in advance. So we'll do that at our next meeting. So, but that's exciting that we will have a full 15-member board starting at our next meeting. Community comments. Are there any community comments?
Are you doing your role call?
Oh, yes. Lisa's gonna do a role call. Thank you.
Just hope it's not being unorganized or, Ethan Mar.
Here.
Thomas Bristol. Sandra Remoche. Steve Diglio.
Here.
Gail Conley.
Present.
Gail's here. Can you hear us, folks who are remote? Yes, great. Thank you.
Eve Brady.
I'm here.
Susan Mullins.
Here.
Stuart Mordred.
Here.
Tara Aronson.
Online.
Tara's here.
Katie Nelson.
Here.
Allison Crone.
Here.
Evan Chadwick.
Here.
I'm here.
Kevin Campbell.
Kevin's here.
Gabrielle Allen.
Here.
Gracie Bancy.
Here.
We can hear them, but Tara's muted, I think.
So Kevin, if you unmute, can you say something?
One, two, three.
We can't hear you. You are exactly right. And Gracie, do you stay here?
We were talking to each other.
I was here.
I can hear Kevin.
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Very well.
All right.
We're all here.
Great.
No separate online board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Excellent, thank you.
Watch what we say now.
That's a good call every time. I also want to introduce a guest to the meeting. Mary Catherine Stone, representative from Burlington, Chittenden, which district?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, I was gonna guess wrong, is here tonight. She is, she serves on the education committee and she is going around the state to visit, to visit different school districts in different parts of the state to understand more deeply what's going on in our districts, what we need, what the state needs to do differently to support schools better and, you know, what's working, what's not working and all of that. So if folks have ideas and want to share them, I'm sure she would be happy to have a conversation. So thanks for being here. Okay, still no community comments. Mike Weston.
I'm gonna be talking about efficiency-based graduation requirements. The first thing is, who sets graduation requirements from high school? Put the next one, Brad. Slide two, first. Graduation requirements are set by the state of Vermont, the Ed Quality Standards. They set the minimum graduation requirements. The school board sets the final requirements for every district, but they have to be at least matched the minimum requirements that's set in the state Ed Quality Standards. Click it again, Brad. The current graduation requirements went into effect for the class of 2021. So yes, the class that graduated three months after COVID hit, it was the first class to have to deal with new graduation requirements. They were adjusted by the state, if you could click again, Brad. They were adjusted by the state in an attempt to better prepare high school graduates for post-secondary career college options. Again, Brad, and it's from these requirements that the P B G Rs came up with, efficiency-based graduation requirements. You're gonna hear P B G R a lot. I'm gonna go into detail a little bit more about it, but essentially, when we went to high school, we earned credits. So when I started as administrator, to graduate from Mount Mansfield High School, you needed 20 credits. 16 as required by the state of Vermont, so four English, three math, three science, three social studies, art, phys ed, and then four elective credits. And you earned credits. MMU though have been a semester school, so you earned credits by passing a course over a semester, you're gonna have a credit. Passing is 60%. There's no real, there was no real discussion about what a biology class was, about what an algebra one class was, about what a 10th grade English class was. It was just, you needed four English credits, you needed three math credits. So the thinking from the state, they were, the Ed Quality Standards of the Vermont School Board, they were right. We didn't really know what was coming out and everyone was doing it differently. So what they did, if you go to the next page, Brad, is 20, 21, 20.7, a student needs to require an extra graduation when the student demonstrates evidence of proficiency in their curriculum outline. Now, we should have just put it all together if that wasn't too clean. We'll get to the other part. They also said that every secondary school board responsible set a graduation requirements in accordance with these rules, which is why you're involved in the policy, etc. If you hit the next, we get the required curriculum, happen again. So you've seen 20, 20.5, now we're gonna go through the different categories, one click at a time. The first one was literacy, to include critical thinking, language reading, speaking, you can all read it. So the first one's literacy. The second, second one is mathematical content practices, and I do want to point out something about this. Including numbers and operation, the concepts of algebra, geometry by the end of grade 10. In theory, according to the state of Vermont, a student could be done math after their sophomore year. I haven't met one yet who met their proficiencies after 10th grade and they said, no, I don't want to take it. But they could. This is, this is the standard that's set by the state. Next, we're gonna get into science. And as you can tell, it's kind of hitting upon the courses you gotta take. You know, you get your life science, physical, earth, space, engineering design. Global citizenship is where social studies would fall under. Physical education and health, in physical education, health education, as defined. So this is, this is the one course that is still a seat, you know, a seat time course. Because there is parts of the Vermont law that says schools need to teach how to receive the R. Schools need to teach about nutrition. So there's certain things we need to teach and students need to be able to do. So if you went to title 16 and you went to 131, you can see the list of topics that are covered in this course. Next, you have artistic expression, including visual media and performing arts. And last, transferable skills. So in my opinion, these might be the most important. I, you know, I think they really tie into some of the reading and writing, which you know is a lifelong skill, but you gotta be able to communicate, you gotta be able to collaborate, you gotta be creative. You know, you gotta, you gotta be able to problem solve, use tech. So that's, that's where they, that was their big cover. So these are the required curriculums. If we go to the next page. So broken down here, so what happened? I'm gonna skip ahead. Just get that, forget the first one about this one. So we had that page where we had literacy, scientific, inquiry, math. That learned from the state, I gave to our teachers. And said, we said to them, what do we want a graduate, someone who walked across the stage, to know? So if we go backwards now, Brad. They came up with these, to meet literacy, you need to have five, have, be proficient in five P B G Rs. Math is six, science is six, global citizenship is six, and so on. Can you click on the link to our P B G Rs, Brad? The Google dot. Sorry to ask you so much.
No, you're fine.
Had the rest of the question.
Yeah.
So is one class one P B G R or the half P B G R?
We'll get there. No, it's okay. It's not working?
Yeah, it's not. Let me click on it. I apologize.
Me neither.
It worked for me, Eric.
Share the document. There, I'm gonna share a document with you, Brad. Did you get it?
Slide six has a clickable link that does work to, takes you to the P B G Rs.
You can try that. I don't, I think for some reason it's not working, but I would be able to get there from the other slide.
Let me, you sent me a doc.
I just sent you a doc, yep. Sorry about the pet. This is critical thinking, Bob's side. Abby, jump in wherever you want, because you're one of the. It's one, you're free to jump in.
I feel so insulted.
Gracie, you're there too. You better jump in, you're a senior. You've probably met all 33 of them by now.
I finished my last one today.
Yay, congratulations.
There we go. So here is the, our literacy P B G R. So we've broken down those five and those, maybe she did the areas, writing, research, reading, language, critical discourse, and how we define them. Each of these furthermore has a rubric that is, that is used to assess it within the class. Real quick, if you can just go through the doc, Brad, you'll see that we've had the same thing for everybody. When you get to math, I want to show you something real quick. The math folks can count. But what you'll notice is it goes one, two, three, five, six, seven. When it was originally created, there was seven math P B G Rs. One of them was functions. And they made the decision that there's not much difference. I mean, function is an algebra skill. So instead of kind of standalone P B G R for functions, we encompassed, they said, let's take that out and encompass it and add to the skill. So you will notice that some of our P B G Rs, the numbering going quite right. It goes back to when they were created. Next, we have science. When I was on the tour, we talked about, in the process of thinking about breaking away engineering practices. So if you look at S6, which is scientific and engineering practices, demonstrate knowledge and application of scientific and engineering practices through the integration of science, tech, indoor engineering concept. So we're thinking about creating standalone classes to hit the engineering side of it. It's been a bit of an add-on in some of our science classes to do this, this P B G R justice. So that's why we're, that's been in play. P B G R will still be in there. Our students will still be meeting it, but instead of doing it in the science class, we'll do it in some standalone, what the old days, you might have called tech classes. Next, you have global citizenship, which is social studies, you know. One of the things that we're getting closer to is you've seen at least two P B G Rs made inquiry. And you've seen the word inquiry, I think, in the English P B G Rs, we are getting closer to that being a transferable skill or one that runs around the building. We haven't quite gotten there yet, but, you know, you see, you see these run through. I did want to get to, just to show you, physical and health ed, this is the next page. The top two are the core concepts of decision-making, is where the health concepts. The next two, fitness concepts and knowledge and skills, is the physical education component. So essentially, our students take a class in ninth grade called Health and Fitness. In that class, they're gonna meet the two health proficiencies and they're gonna meet the fitness proficiency. The next, the knowledge and skill proficiency, they're gonna meet one of probably three ways. The first is by taking two phys ed courses with us. You know, be that yoga, rec sports, healthy living, outdoor adventure. Those are, those are the four courses we're running next year. By playing two seasons of two sports is another way. And the third way is outside of our school. We have a lot of students who are involved in physical activities outside of our school. Maybe that's five on goal, horseback riding, ballet, and we have a way for them to go about eating that. But that's, that's the way it goes our mess. And the last one before we get into transferable skills is art. And you see that is broken into two big categories. Artistic literacy and reflection and critique. Essentially, to get through this, it's gonna take a year. If you're taking a fine art, you're gonna take the first course, which we call Intro to Visual Art, which essentially eliminated all those units once. So if you were taking pottery, or painting, or drawing, you always started with the same basic concepts. I mean, there was specifics about paint, but it, but there was, the general idea that that first unit was the same. So what we do in our I D A is we teach the basic concepts. And we also expose the students to all the different mediums that we work in. So when they take their second course and maybe their third, they have an idea what they're gonna do. And that, in that second course is where they get into reflection and critique. And the last is our transferable skills. Once again, you see one, two, four, and five. These are, you know, we had five to start, now we have four. The one that has been pushed aside was integrative thinking. And they were just a hard standalone P B G R, so we've kind of tied it into some other classes. If we can jump back to the PowerPoint, we go to the next slide.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So when you're talking about transferable skills versus the class-based P B G Rs, do you have specific classes where they can earn the transferable skill?
Depends on the skill.
Or the multiple opportunities?
It's always multiple. But we will get to that if we go through, once the slideshow is back up.
Great, thanks.
Go to the next one down. We got two little short fact points that are gonna come up here. First class graduate was 2020. And one of the things that our curriculum groups are continually doing is evaluating and adjusting P B G Rs, the rubrics, the assignments we're using to assess. The next I want to take a look at, and I hope it opens for you, Brad, is the MMU program studies.
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, coming to you.
This is part of the handbook every year or it's a?
Yes, well, it's not part of the handbook, it's actually a different, a different. I should have sent you just the link, and I'm gonna send you the other things that are linked in here while you're opening that.
It's on the website, right?
Yes, it is on the website.
Is that the one link or?
No.
Yeah, no, no, that's, that's our, our. We will.
That's one of the other links, okay.
I was sending you the movie.
It's the one that looks like this.
It was just, it was a straight web address. It was an email thing.
Oh, it was an email, okay, I'm sorry. I was looking at the drive-by.
No, it was a straight email with a link. Sorry, should have said that. So go down, just start scrolling down. You're gonna wanna get down to page 70, anywhere, once you get into the classes, so just scroll away. That document, scroll for you?
Giving him a lot of problems.
Yeah. Can you present it, Mike, you think?
Good, did I take it off the, does that go off the, will that still be on the?
I think you could just, you just hit present.
Or you, did you join the meeting?
I haven't joined the meeting.
Oh, okay, so that'd be probably have to be.
So I'm just gonna walk around and show you.
I joined the meeting. See if I can present.
The program of study, if you can see it, has listed every course we have. And at the bottom of course, you know, you will see, you see like English 10, and below it would be the P B G Rs that are assessed within it. One of the things you would notice is that every P B G R within at least two courses. One of the things you would notice is that every PBGR within at least two courses. Um, and Brett, if you go to the, okay, who's that?
Where would you like to go?
Keep going, keep, keep going. So, it's talking to where you want now. So, American literary experience, which is an 11th grade English class, you see that in, in that course, the PBGRs that are, that are assessed is writing and research. Those students are out in forceable, one-year-long course, they're going to be working on writing and research. We're going to show you a report card here in a little bit, that there's different ways of the report card, they're, they're reported. What we call, like, pre-PBGR, where untranscribed, would be maybe you just have one or two assignments in. But when you've had, uh, you know, four, five, six assignments, you'll see an asterisk next to it, and it would say, that's going to end up on your PBGR transcript, which you will see in a little bit. But as you go through all our courses, you see PBGRs throughout the, the bunch of them, like, some don't have it, but most do. And that, that runs through all our courses, and the way this works is, um, for Abby, I would say eighty percent of our students kind of follow a couple of typical roads through to meet our thirty-three PBGRs. There are many ways to meet them, and we're going to talk about that when we get to, like, the backways. But the, the typical student, um, remembering, you know, seventy-plus percent of our students go to post-secondary education, are going to hit, hit those PBGRs on the way. Um, we'll talk about tech centers during, after we get through this as well. But, so this is the, the roadmap for taking courses here.
Question.
Or do you want to see a transcript or a report card? I don't, whoever.
Oh, do you want me to share something else?
Do, do you go back to the report card, is that?
Yeah, go back to one of the report cards, which is, if you're.
Brett has that.
Okay. I shared two report cards with two transcripts with you. I practice as a mother in the United States slideshow, hoping things. So, here's a report card, um, and what you're looking at, uh, the top half of the report card is the PBGRs. Um, so this is a, uh, ninth grader. So, one of the things you're going to notice is every student has work habits as a, as a grade. One of the things that we believe is you cannot ask, you cannot get to graduation day successfully without having demonstrated work habits. There's the same, um, assessment, the same rubric that's used. Our teachers are teaching enough work habits, so you'll see that in everyone. The other thing you'll notice is the little asterisk next to geometry, um, and, which is social studies. Now, if you go over here to, um, this is a ninth grader, so they, they'll, this is a first quarter PBGR, uh, report card. If you can go up a little bit. Don't worry about it, Brett. Click on the other report card, the junior, the senior report card, I have it there. So, this is the junior. We'll go to, we'll go to that 11th grade course we were just talking about. They, they, they do reading and critical discourse in 12th grade, finally get to the transcript, but for now, they're still being assessed. So, this student would be M, meaning reading, critical discourse, which is discussing and if, and taking, uh, taking your knowledge in and building off other things that people are saying. The student had a W, still working on. Writing, which is something that gets assessed in this class, you see during quarter one with a W, they continued to write and did some, did some more assignments. Quarter two was in the end, and for the semester end, if you notice the difference, the asterisk and non-asterisk, the asterisk is going to end up on the transcript. So, that, that represents many more, many more assignments. You see the same thing down here, A, proficiency theory, this student took. Now, you see reflection, the, the literacy work habits. This student already had met, um, met their proficiencies already in art, so the, the teacher chose not to have them go on twice, so that's why you don't see an asterisk there. Um, social studies, we got history. The other thing you'll, you'll notice throughout all of us, if you continue to see work habits being assessed. Can you open up one of the transcripts? I don't care which, uh, I'd like the proficiency transcript, but do whatever you want. You're going to see two transcripts, same student. One is a proficiency transcript, one is a traditional, one we're probably all a little bit more comfortable with transcript. When a student applies for college, bulk go, page one, proficiencies, page two, traditional. Why do we do this? Um, we do it because our students, we have MMU, you know, the number one school in Vermont, yeah, but a lot of colleges don't know MMU. They don't know what we do. And our school profile talks about it, but having a traditional grade point does keep some doors open for our students besides just Ws and Ts. So, this is a proficiency transcript. So, if we went to the top, we're assuming with a freshman, and they, they passed all, well, they passed all of, all their proficiencies that they should have. So, you see, uh, Ms in jargon, they're global sciences, they're two health fitness, they're, they got the integrated R, uh, math one, they have a proficiency in number and quantity that they struggled with. So, they earned a W. You see that again down here in 10th grade. So, this is what it looks like. Um, this, now, if you go to their, their last year here, you see mobile faculty, so this, this person, um, picked up their decision-making and knowledge and skills, uh, health PBGRs in college course. So, you see that there's, that, that is, that you can show the same student or other, And this is the traditional GPA-based, um, transcript. You see the course, you see the grade, you see the amount of graphics. When you look at, uh, English 11, which she took 11 AP with the proficiencies that are saying, I guess you would know it's an AP course. But if you look at contemporary US history, you don't really know what we're teaching there. But when you have PBGRs, we know, and we are telling the students, and we're telling, um, the public, this is, this is what we're, the, the big takeaway from that, that course is. So, um, you know, in, in Grace and Abby, the students know it's a PBGR assignment. I mean, please tell me that we've gotten better at that, right?
Yes, always now.
You know, and that's something that we, we talk a lot about. Um, so this, that's just an example of, of our record-keeping. Um, it was a much bigger deal back in 2016, 17, when this came on. If anyone, people on the board remember, there were people who were upset. We sort of tiptoed around upset people because we kept our two systems going. Um, and it has worked very well for us. I would say one thing that's really helped us is it's allowed teachers to dig back into what they're teaching, why they're teaching it, how does it help kids, how does it lead to effective engagement. Those conversations now are ongoing. You could return to the thing, I do want to re-click that upon the logical pathway stuff.
Why, what's M D?
Not path, instead of an athlete, an athlete. I don't like that letter. Yeah, no, it's bad. You should not pass.
I have a question, I don't know, is the.
No, so after the question, right?
I'm only, I have a question, but, um, so what I think about is what our middle school grading is like, and that's proficiency-based, right? They're not getting letters, they're not getting numbers, they're getting meets the standard, like, it's, I see the standard, or is approaching the standard, um, for Campbellstown Middle School at least, and I'm not sure about Brown River. But I, as a parent and as a school board member, I think about what the transition is like for kids when they begin getting those letter grades and start understanding, you know, like, I don't know. Who, can you tell me more about what that experience is like for them? Tell me.
How was it with eighth grade, ninth grade grades?
Um, for me, it wasn't too much. I mean, obviously, it is like a difference. For me, it wasn't super effective, not offensive, like, too earth-shattering, I guess, um, because since we're still on like the working towards the meets, exceed scale, like, um, it's kind of, it's helpful, you can still see like where you are. And then also, like, the A, B, C kind of letters, that can be like, I feel a little scared to like go there too, but, um, it's kind of easy to see, like, it's pretty well-understood, like, what is a passing grade, and it's well-talked about, who's glad it's here, you know? What, where you should be in particular grade, you, if you're not where you should be. So, like, definitely the support and the building stuff is very helpful, and doesn't make you have to go through.
Tracy, do you want to add anything or not?
I mean, my freshman year was so weird, so I don't know if I'm the person to really ask about this, but I, I do know from like my, the last four years, is that a thing that I found really convenient is that in Power School, if there was a PBGR assignment, you can see where you're at, so it's kind of, you're more involved in the process, which was really nice.
So, what Power School is, is it's our, it's our gradebook. Um, and we actually have, we have Schoology, which has a gradebook component, and we have Power School, which has a gradebook component. And when it's a PBGR assignment, it's flagged a certain way, so, so folks can see it. It certainly is something we, we, we work with the students on their way up. One of the advantages, to be honest, that I've experienced over the years is more parents understand what a B is, what a C is, and what an A is than meets the standard, nearly meets the standard. So, there, it's helpful conversations. I mean, if anyone who's a parent here, you get a lot of emails from me saying, have a conversation with your students. I write that about twice a quarter about the grades. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't, parents shouldn't be hovering over the gradebook, but twice a quarter, sitting down with your students and going through the gradebook, not a bad idea. It's great conversation to add what they're learning, what they're, what they're doing, what's exciting, what's not exciting. And parents can feel a bit more comfortable with the, the, the levels. And for me, that conversation, um, is important, but it's something that we, we do work to make sure that we, we try to deal with, with that knowledge for students coming in.
Um, I have a question. So, because you can get several of the PBGRs in specific class, it's like, how, like, is it, do the, are the students more, like, are you constantly aware of like how many PBGRs you have completed? I feel like it can be like really.
Guides counselor.
Guides, so it's like they know that we're like getting close to, like, oh, you still need five or six PBGRs, or, you know, there's two good. I feel like, I feel like it was kind of a long, like, study.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I didn't have, and don't have.
Because every year, students need with their counselors, at least twice, but every January, February, they need to pick next year's classes. And one of the things that requires you, right, is going to be looking back at your grades and what you learned previously. So, you do pick grades that, that, you pick classes that you need. Um, speaking of that, can you just push down to the logical pathway part? It's just the two words, but, um, one of the great things about the M is we don't have to earn your diploma just inside the M. So, we have students that, that go to the tech centers. And one of the things we did when this course started is we made the decision that if you are taking a, a, a biology course, or if someone is saying you have met the requirements for a biology course, whatever PBGRs are in our biology course, we're saying are in that. So, we have to trust each other as area, or area techs. So, um, when a student takes a tech class, it says they still use credit verbiage, and it says, you know, if there's embedded math in this, where there's embedded, there's embedded physical science in this. Um, so, it still says that part, and we, we make that work. Now, if you're at CTE, you might need to take a social studies course at CTE, and they, they, they pop out of their, um, their track or class, they're in to go take, um, and then do a, a course every other day. Um, other ways to do it, we have some students that, that work with these, and through, um, you guys have come up with help learning that. Um, so, they, they are incredible over there. I'm not just saying that because they're there. We have students who are struggling, they haven't, for whatever reason, haven't worked here. There's a million different reasons. Some of them love us, but just can't work. They go there and even, and if folks look at the, uh, what they have on the transcript, look at what we need to graduate, and they put it together. Um, we have an alternative program here that, that does a similar piece. And then we have students that meet it totally alternative, they're, meet, meet some of these proficiencies through work. Um, we have students who meet these proficiencies through, um, through working, you know, at jobs, or taking college courses. When you start to get in that world, the way we deal with the MMU is we have you work with your, your counselor, and then it's usually the combination of administrator, myself, or Miss Porta, where we're sitting, trying to figure out, how are we meeting this proficiency? What do we need to do? Um, you know, maybe, maybe we can't meet, um, you know, maybe we can't meet the research PBGR any other way except a course or writing, writing, writing some. So, maybe we have a work-alternative program, maybe we help them take a course at ECDLC. Some of our students really like, there's high school courses with BYU that are very old-school correspondence-type courses, and some of our students really enjoy that. It works well for them, have a pile of stuff, and they work their way through. So, there's many ways to get there, and the change between 2020 and 2019 for me is I can stay in the conversation longer with students with proficiency-based graduation. What that means is if I had a student kind of shut down ninth grade, disappeared 10th grade, or didn't pop back up till 11th grade, in the old system, they were so far behind credit lines that it was really hard to get them to try. And a lot of them just stopped. Now, we talk about what they're doing, we, we need jars, we, you know, we, sometimes we pull up, in ninth grade, there's a, there's the science proficiency in systems, and the, the, the assignment, it's a year-long assignment, create your own column. We will pull up out of their drive what they did, and we'll have them, you know, finish making, we're, we're doing the assignment so they can read that. It has opened that door, um, a rate, that's been a saver for my students. And the other pieces, I used to shake hands, I love shaking hands at graduation, it's my favorite activity. I'm always the last to handshake, I'm off to the, I'm off to the, you know, the left in the audience, right? They, they, they see all the fancy people, and I have a little conversation with everyone. There were some who I loved dearly, I shook their hand, and I wished them well. I wasn't sure how much they'd learned from me. Now, for you to walk across that stage, I feel pretty darn good that you've got things, you know, you picked a doorless floor backpack, a pocket, whatever, that are going to allow you to be successful. So, um, I, this system, I think, has been a bit of a game changer for the law education, I really do. I know some places it's been difficult, but at MMU, it's. Question, George, when?
That question, yeah. So, I remember in that school, bouncing around the seventh degree number in Texas, that's the passing, and there was no passing to play. So, sports, like, if a kid is like on the boat of like understanding, not understanding, how does that student get to the passing mark to play?
So, sports are still 2.0. So, we still use our grade point average to play sports. Um, so you need to have a 2.0, which is a 70, right? So, you know, you're getting both, you're getting both pieces back. Um, to be an athlete here, you've got to be able to bypasses. Your GPA at the end of the most recent quarter needs to be a 2.0 or better. Um, every quarter, we have some athletes who run into some struggles, that clearly haven't done the work. Over two or three weeks into that next quarter, they put their note for the grindstone, they get some stuff done, and they go from being a practice-only player back to being a player. Um, so that's, that's how, you know, we, we still do use some of the carrot stick components of a traditional grade point to, to, uh, with, with our students.
Go ahead, Ethan.
Um, would you say that, like, you were sort of explaining, like, the PBGRs add like a layer, that, I mean, you didn't necessarily, you know, like, some schools in the state, like, went wholesale and changed every.
Definitely, you didn't necessarily, you know, like, some schools in the state like went wholesale and changed everything from soup to nuts. But what I'm hearing is that PBGRs are really like adding more richness to the experience here. It's not as if you changed the program necessarily, you just.
We didn't, we didn't, you know, there, 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 there's 60 some odd high schools and they went 60 different directions. And some really went, uh, into the big six, eight, nine different proficiencies and that's all they had. Um, that didn't seem to fit who we were. Um, but I do think this, this, this added, uh, this added up complexities, added up depth to what we're doing. You know, if you look at colleagueship, that is smattered, that is some, uh, collaboration. That is, that is smattered through some of our courses and you get grades and collaboration. Um, and that's one we're just getting ready to, to roll out. That's been a tough one to do. Um, your presentations, one that's not so tough to do, that's smattered throughout a whole bunch of courses in our, in our, in our building. Um, but that, that was a decision that fit this place in. And I really think that, I, I think that was a good decision, you know? Not that the other folks are going to pay anything wrong, it's just for us, where we were, um, what we were doing, it worked. And I, I think now students are getting a better education than they were before. Uh, we talking, I'm talking soup to nut students, you know? If the doctor, the, the one who gets by.
Anyone remote have a question? Not going to ignore you. Go ahead, Tara.
Thanks. Um, I have so many, but I will only ask one and a half. With the huge focus on literacy in our district, why do we have less PBGRs for literacy than we do for the math and science?
I can chime in on this one.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Gracie.
Um, it's like for, from a student's perspective at least, um, English is the, really the only core class that requires you to take four years of it to get those PBGRs. So it's more of a like continued process. Like I took four years of math, but I got my PBGR for a sophomore year. I like finished that literacy PBGR, that section until your senior year. So it kind of keeps you in that program for a while. I don't know. But I'm not an administrator.
You're good. I, I, I think one of the big things is, uh, we have decided to use less defined skills in literacy and more higher constants. With the exception of language, which is grammar. You know, reading, writing, research, critical discourse are big picture. There's many facets to them. So, um, that was the decision the English department made. And we just finished a NEAS visit last week. And one of the things that happened is we had all the NEAS people in here, we had 32 students in here showing them some of their work. And one of the common, uh, one of the good thing they said about it was what your kids are writing at, in a, a level higher than we see it, and they're all fine, um, than we ever see in our school. So it's there, it's just done a little bit differently. It's not standard based. That's the difference between K through eight, where every standard, you know, things are broken down a bit more with proficiency, which is a, a bigger picture.
And for our new board members, NEAS gives?
New England Association of Schools and Colleges, every 10 years or so, they assess, um, high schools and they, they say, you know, they, they assess you against current research, um, and they, they come and they do a visit. And, um, we'll get their report back in July, August, but they left very happily. Do you have more? I don't know if it's hard or if it's.
Another question, Tara?
Yeah, um, I have to tell you, I'm having a really difficult time hearing tonight too, because I'm, I heard Gracie both on, I, the echo in the room and online. Um, so like I'm listening to myself lag right now, so I'm struggling with the commute, um, the listening. But aside from that, Katie brought this up earlier, right? Talking about the middle school to high school transition and, and standards set in middle school and now moving to high school. How do you work with families and students to help them understand so that families can support their students, why they're making this transition? And the enormous difference between middle school and high school?
Um, that starts in our late January, early February meeting where we, we are talking about curriculum, we're talking about PBGRs. It continues throughout the process of, of our, uh, meetings with our adults. Students are getting it every day in the classroom. Um, it is, you know, it, it is, it is very well explained. Our ninth graders come into a little bit different system. Um, they're not point teams, we call them co-ops. So they, they're, they're, they're a little bit smaller group, similar teachers who are talking and working with them. Um, you know, it, it is a structured transition and, um, we do whatever is needed. You know, for most, our transition works. If more is needed for some, we have more meetings and we, we meet with more folks.
Good? Ish? Okay. We'll, we'll hop back into that and, right, other questions?
I actually have the same question Tara had, so I'm good.
Did you feel like you got?
Yeah, objectively, this feels like a lot. I'm not in the classrooms or experiencing it. And I'm having, someone going into kindergarten next year, so we have a long way to go before we get here. So I trust that it, it works. If you say it works, it feels like there's a lot of systems and stuff. And as we were looking through the course selection thing, I have like a little anxiety coming. Just brings you back, right, to high school and selecting everything, but.
I'll say as a parent whose kid was in that 2020 graduating class, so the guinea pig for this, um, the school did a lot to, for the parents at least, to help us to, to understand what was happening and to, to get Susan was, had a child in that class also. Um, to keep us up to date so that it wasn't a surprise and it wasn't anything that was on, that was difficult to understand, right? It was a, um, and my kid also didn't feel like it was too complicated. Felt like, I know the grade thing, I got that down, the PBGRs, sure. Like if I'm meeting it, it's fine. And my, I mean, our kids weren't, you know, didn't really have learning issues, like struggles, but they, you know, were, they didn't feel very stressed. And I know you did a little bit more robust after that year. Um, so.
And that's why that vertical alignment in the curriculum is so important. And one of the, you know, our critical, our key priorities is because that's how kids are prepared. And the communication that we have with the middle schools, when we're looking to revise seventh and eighth grade curriculum and fifth grade and sixth grade, that time is, um, and that communication is, is vital. We, you know, that's an ongoing process that we work at every week. We also want to do better. And that, that is one of the reasons why we put it on as a, as, as one of the key priorities, um, moving forward.
Go ahead, Tara.
I just have a, a question to clarify. So these, um, the PBGR transcript and the traditional transcript, um, is that being done on all high schools throughout Vermont?
I don't know with high schools. I know some high schools don't even report PBGRs. There are some high schools that say if you take four English, you've met proficiency. Well, taking three science, both in Chippewa County and that one. So we, we, uh, if, if we're going to do all this work as teachers to, to do this, if we're going to have our students do the work to meet it, we're going to report it. And if you, our report card, we put a priority on it. The first thing on the report card is the PBGRs. The second thing is the traditional grades. Um, but to be honest, even though the college presidents and folks like that say that the first thing they look at is that they don't need traditional grades.
They need traditional grades.
So I mean, I, I think that's one of the smartest things that we did. Um, was to be able to have these parallel systems. So we're not putting kids at a disadvantage and they have no control over that. Um, so I, I, you know, at the time when we were putting this together, you know, that's what the, the district and the board at the time, uh, said that we needed to do.
Yeah. So you're saying that some schools in the state just do the, I shouldn't be, they don't have a letter grade?
In some schools, just the letter grades.
Yeah. Like how do those kids get in the.
That's really not for, right? But it's, it is, it is more complicated.
Wouldn't it be like, shouldn't, like, I feel like council all of the state, if they like, you should also do this?
Well, I had jokes, I was going to say.
Perhaps.
State actually is been working, um, to launch a lot of proficiency based guidance. And like fair style hierarchies and they're rolling out, because I mean, they, they basically said, okay, schools, be proficiency based now and figure it out, right? And so I think like, I believe you did a correct job in terms of like finding that balance. Um, and the state is, you know, today, it is, it should be still trying to help schools make that transition. And so, you know, even school like, you know, UVM is still accepting more high school students than they are. So they need to have somebody to compare. And that's where I think it is. I just wanted to say something just to the, you know, and I don't have a kid in high school, but I, I do spend a fair amount of time talking with some students. I think the, the guidance counselor is a really, you know, key person in helping like transition. But I think advisory is probably the place where a student has that adult that they know and they get to know better over the course of their experience here in a smaller thing. A guidance counselor must have one, 200, 100 and a little bit under, people that they're responsible for, but an advisor.
As a dozen?
Twelve. So there's a place where you can both, I'll be as a student and as a parent, can have someone to. A bunch of other advantage advisory is the students get the overview, right? You walk into your advisor's ninth grader, you're going to be there for four years. So the, we, you, a lot of advisors typically have a discussion about course selection, because we do that all at the same time. So, yes, sometimes it is about big disadvantage of having to be lunch, but sometimes it is about.
Okay. So to keep us on track and not get us too, too late tonight, um, I know Mike would be more than happy to answer any other questions that we have and we can pull him back for another meeting on this if we need to. Um, but our next agenda item is to talk about the updated proficiency based graduation requirement policy. John?
Yeah. So when Mike can help, because we worked on this together, um, with, uh, some other administrators and educators in the, in the district. Uh, this is, if you look at our, uh, uh, our, um, the graduation policy we have right now, it's very generic. This gets into more specificity around aligning with what the expectations are from the state of Vermont that are in the ed quality standards. It also includes making sure that, um, there are flexible pathways, that we're making accommodations for students that are on IBPs and 504s. And that, um, the PBGRs reflect the learning standards that are, um, have been adopted and will be adopted by the state board of education. So it, it has a, a much more, um, measured approach and details around what, uh, we're asking students to be able to do and then, um, and what some of the responsibilities are of the administration. And it also includes things like personal learning plans, which are also a requirement by the state of Vermont. Um, and it also includes some additional requirements that MMU adopted, which was the advisory program and the senior seminar. This is also based on the model and has some references to the, um, ed quality standards and the rules that govern, uh, graduation and a recommended, uh, time to, to report out. We've integrated this, these, Mike did some of this tonight. And we also have integrated it, some of the reporting into our ends, uh, monitoring reports.
So we'll talk about this more at our next meeting, but the way that it works is we have to warn it, warn policies at one meeting and we can adopt them at the next meeting. If folks are comfortable, can we hold questions until the next meeting so that we can do our best to stay on schedule for tonight? Does that work? Everybody okay with that? I'm seeing mostly nods. Okay, great. Um, then let's move on. And Mike, you're welcome to head out if you want to. Thank you for being here and congratulations. On which one? What would you like me to congratulate you for?
My twins graduate from college.
Your twins are graduating.
Esports, uh, state championship. There's a lot of things to be good about for Gracie graduating here in a month. Um, did you have any questions after you walked through and looked at it? If you go look through the report cards and transcripts, I just took them out of the report again because even though I blocked out addresses and pages, I, I think someone put it down by, it was stupid. So I did take those out, but I'm more than happy to sit and talk when I want to.
Um, what I was saying congratulations about is for MMU to be named the number one high school in the state again. And I believe it's three out of the last four years.
Four out of the five.
Four out of the last five years.
That's all because you put.
So congratulations.
Thanks, thanks for being here. Um, 2.2 policy governance monitoring report, John?
Okay, so this is one of the executive limitations. So these are some guardrails that, um, you know, things on, uh, that we as an organization need to meet and do. Um, and also, you know, a little bit of things I can't do. So what I tried to do with this report is, um, provide you with an interpretation and a summary of the section and then provide you with some authentic and real, uh, evidence and, and information to prove that, uh, we're meeting this executive limitation. So in policy governance for new, new folks, we have executive limitations, which are essentially the things I can, can, should and cannot do. Um, and in this particular one, we're talking about instead of shall not, shall. So in 2022, we spent a year working on revising some of these policies. And so this is one of the revised policies that focuses on staff. And the, the title is treatment of staff, um, but it, it, it's bigger than that. Um, it's, you know, setting up the systems and the organization and the resources so that we're meeting state and federal guidelines, that we are including, you know, we have safe schools, that we, um, have a wellness program and that we are trying to celebrate people that are doing a good job. Um, and what I did is provide evidence, uh, that we are, that we're doing that. Um, this is an ongoing process. So this is iterative. You, you're never done, right? When you're thinking about having a, an effective, safe and productive work environment, it is an ongoing work and something that never stops. This is an area where we have gained a lot of ground over the last eight years. And I give credit to Rebecca Tebow, who, um, has spent, you know, hours making sure that we have the right trainings in place, that we have a coordinated, uh, wellness program, that we have the training, the trainings that we need around Title IX and, um, around harassment, um, of, of staff to staff and sometimes staff to students. So, uh, what I thought I would do is go through the sections just briefly and talk about those and give you an overview. Uh, Rebecca helped me prepare this. Andrew also did some, um, work on this and around the curriculum piece and the professional development, which again is ongoing. We're always looking for ways to do, uh, it better. Um, but we, we're, we're doing well. Uh, we have some good supports for people. We're, uh, again, always looking to do things better. But, um, I think this is an executive limitation that, um, we're staying within the guardrails and we're meeting the, you know, the primary tenants of it. Um, so, uh, the first section, and I won't read this to you is, uh, but I would, would read this part, uh, that the Mount Mansfield Unified Union School District prides itself on creating an environment that is inclusive and promotes a positive workplace. Um, so that's sort of the overarching executive limitation, uh, and goal. And the first section is it provides clear policies and procedures. Uh, and I won't go A to F. Uh, and I won't go A to F, but, um, essentially, that's making sure that we have an up-to-date, you know, our, our handbooks are up-to-date. We're continually looking at our job descriptions and revising them as needed. That, um, we have a, a robust mentoring program for teachers, um, that follows the law but also meets the needs of our, our teachers. Uh, that we have the necessary trainings, um, and optional opportunities for staff, that we're also integrating equity and inclusion, um, information and trainings into our workplace, and that, um, that we're providing our, uh, staff and educators with good, uh, professional development. So what I did in that, said, that first section is just give you some information that I think, um, gives you evidence that, that we're meeting that. And then we have our, uh, information about our wellness program, which has become, you know, a lot more wide-scale and rich, I would say. Uh, Wednesday, we have our Spring Fest at Jericho, and, uh, we're gonna have some wood-fired pizza and some games, um, and we did one in the winter, and it was really great to, to get the, just, everybody together and just, you know, do some healthy activities, um, all together, and we got some really good feedback on it. Um, then going to safety preparation, because that's critical. Um, people need to be safe in schools, and, um, we, again, have done, I think, really improved in this area, um, again, with the support of Rebecca and Blake Leonard, who was our assistant, uh, special services, uh, director, but she's come back and done a lot of work with us around compliance. And she's created these hubs that our administrators, um, and staff that need it have all the information, resources, and materials that they need. So that we're, you know, keeping our building safe and that we're following all the rules of the, and the laws of the state of Vermont, uh, and that we're, um, we're doing things right. So when we do have an issue, the people know what to do and that we do it correctly. Um, provide you too with our administrative procedural guide. It's a lot of information there, but I do think, do think it demonstrates, um, some of the key principles that are in this executive limitation, and, um, then some trainings that we do, uh, more information about the handbook, and, um, we've had, we haven't had a grievance in two years, and I think it's longer than that, but I tried to focus on two years for this report. And I, that's, that's for a couple of reasons, really good communication with our, our union leadership, so we're proactive. We identify issues, and then we work together to try to solve them. So we're on the same team, and that's been super, super effective. Um, the next section is two, which is essentially offering, um, professional development that helps people grow, that we have a supervision evaluation system that is, you know, helps to do that. Um, so for evidence, you know, I provided, um, a lot of evidence, you know, our two, our teacher supervision evaluation, uh, system, which we revised and updated, uh, about a year ago or a year and a half ago with the committee. Um, and examples of some evaluations, work we've done for our early release, um, some capacity building, some courses, um, that, that we have supported and offered, um, that help our, our priorities and students be successful. Uh, I won't go through all of this, but our, and I apologize for some of the acronyms, but, um, our MTSS PD that we have been working on and has been a core part of our district, a coaching model, um, uh, how our leadership teams at the schools, which are called our go, guiding coalitions, our, uh, PLC framework, which professional learning communities, uh, that's, we've talked about before, but essentially, it's really structured way to look at student data, and then brainstorm strategies to help kids be successful. And then, um, an example of, of, uh, our new teacher, our, our equity and inclusion training. Then, uh, going through to number three, provide training to ensure the district is, you know, meeting state and federal requirements and guidelines, offering, you know, good tools and resources for staff, and trying to create an environment that is free of harassment, um, where people feel included and welcome, and, um, that workplace environment is equitable. And, uh, again, give, um, some background information, um, some interpretation and an overview of what we're doing here. Then I provide some evidence, um, of the required trainings that everybody must complete, including myself. Um, our policies and procedures for, um, hazing, harassment, bullying, Title IX, our employee harassment policy. Then again, it's more supporting documentation, um, of how we make sure we're doing this with our administrative guide, offering people the information they need in the employee handbook so they know what the expectations are. Um, and then some, an example of the training for Title IX and staff harassment. Then I have, we offer, I, we offered you a slideshow that, um, shows, we try to do this often, and schools do it, um, at a local level and a school-based level, but just recognizing people, um, for accomplishments and doing a good job in service to the, the school community.
Anybody have questions for John?
Kevin, just in the chat.
Kevin, do you have a question? I don't have the meeting open. I'm trying to keep it so that there's less feedback.
Oh, okay, maybe there's no echo.
Is there an echo?
A little echo. I, I think I can get through it. So, thank you, John. As always, very comprehensive, informative report. Um, and I'd say the district takes this one very seriously. I apologize if it's a repeat question from the past similar report, but I'm curious why we didn't include in the report any survey information from employees? And if we do a survey, or if we plan to do a survey, can we measure if these problems are effective?
And the last one, Kevin, I took, um, the, the union usually does a survey that talks about some of this, and that wasn't available. And in the last report, I did include that. So when that does become available, um, I will include that, and there's some good, um, there's some, there's some questions to get right to that, what, what you're asking. But that is not, they, this was not available. At least I couldn't find it.
Okay, so would you say that, uh, you would plan to leverage, uh, direct feedback from employees with future reports?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yep, and we do get some of that, um, qualitatively. We meet monthly with the Greenmount NEA leadership, and they have a, they meet monthly with, like, forty people, and they, um, identify issues and questions, and they bring those to Rebecca and myself, and Andrew meets with us as well, and we brainstorm ways to solve that. And they have done, that they, they have a, um, a feedback group that we, that, with, that we get, uh, that information.
That's really helpful, thank you.
You're, you're welcome.
Um, if there are no other questions, can I get a motion to accept, um, 2.2 Policy Governance Monitoring Report? Thanks, Lisa. Second? Heather, thank you. Any additional discussion on the report? All in favor of accepting the report? Give me a thumb or an eye or a hand. Opposed? All right, that looks like unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Uh, superintendent report.
Okay, um, well, we've got a big grant that I wanted to talk to you about that's gonna help us purchase, um, some literacy resources. We're really, it was a competitive grant.
We got it, yay.
And we got it, so we're really excited about that. And that will help us, um, continue specifically with, um, making sure that we have some great to quotable text, and that we have a rich, robust, um, research-based literacy programs and good, solid, and strong classroom, uh, libraries. So we're excited about that, and it'll help us leverage some funds that, um, are in the budget, uh, um, maybe potentially in some different ways, which is always good, because we didn't know very about this grant until pretty recently. And, um, and MMU was ranked the number one high school, which we've, which we have talked about. I shared this in district happenings. Um, you know, the, I, I, you never want to get too high and you never want to get too low, but four out of five years is not something I have seen. I've been here twenty-two years, um, to have that sort of a consecutive, um, streak. Uh, and they use a lot of objective data when they're putting this together, so it's not just, you know, somebody in a room saying, hey, I think that's a pretty good school. They look at college readiness, the proficiency rates on the ta, um, uh, state assessments, um, and graduation rates, which, um, you know, MMU has a high graduation rate, and it has a lot of students from a variety of different backgrounds and places that are taking at least an AP course and getting a, you know, a three or above. And I, uh, I, I just have so much respect for the people in the, the, in the district, because this is really a pre-K to 12, uh, or, you know, recognition. And so it happens when they are in preschool. You know, what, what happens there makes a difference, um, for, when they matriculate out of MMU. So we also ranked really high nationally, um, in the top, I think, one and a half percent of the, all the high schools in Vermont. Um, then to talk about, we, I brought this to the board several times, and we need to expand our, our K to four alternative programming for students. Our, we have, our, our, the current program that we have in Richmond is full. We have a waiting list, um, and we don't have any alternatives really, um, outside of, uh, Mount Mansfield to offer students a therapeutic and alternative educational setting. And so we're gonna be, um, expanding, money's in the budget. You know, so this is money that we would have spent on contract services, out-of-district placements. Uh, the, so the money is in there, um, but we're just gonna create our own program, uh, in MMU and model it after our multi-H classroom at R E S, which has been successful. Smiley's a great location, because it has the infrastructure, so kids can get, you know, art, music, and lunch, PE. There's space for us to be able to do it, um, a, a very good space and a lot of outdoor learning, for students to be able to access, and it has the leadership, um, from Derek Howard. Derek has a lot of experience in alternative programming. So this is gonna make our system better, and in, in a lot of ways, you know, keep, um, support everybody, including our staff, and keeping students safe. So we're excited about this.
Heather has a question, and I have a question.
How many students will this be able, most of them are available?
Um, I, I, I think the max is eight. And that's, uh, we are, we had, so a couple of things. Mike mentioned alternative program here. We also have one at Brown's River, 5-8, and one at Richmond.
So that's more than we have, like, eight, more than currently on the campus?
Yes, yep, yep. So it's really gonna, uh, it's gonna improve our continuum greatly. You know, we're, right now, we have very few options, or if any. And the students, you know, still keep coming to school that need a, a different, um, environment. So I think this is gonna, this is a big upgrade for us, and we really don't have a choice. We have to.
Are there other questions? Yeah.
Good girl, you weren't ready.
That's fine.
Um, this is Mike, pardon my ignorance, but is the program at Richmond now, is that similar to, um, what Mansfield Academy should be?
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I was gonna walk us through the history of it, but do you want to walk us through the history?
Yeah, so we've, um, we had, uh, it's a long history, um, so I'll reiterate it, but we have, we've had some alternative programs, we call them Mansfield Academy, and for a long time, they were off-site. And you probably remember this, Susan, I think you were on the Jericho Board then, when we integrated it back into the school and, um, for a lot of different reasons, you know, keeping kids more connected, so, and making sure that they have, you know, equitable opportunities. Um, and we also, our 5-8 was also off-site, and our 9-12 was also, also off-site. So we integrated back, those back in ten years ago, probably. Um, and it has really, uh, allowed us to reintegrate more students back in, which is always the goal, is for them to get back into the, um, you know, quote-unquote, regular ed environment and give them the skills that they need to be able to be successful.
So just new, for new board members, these are programs that give us, um, more one-to-one and even more than that, opportunities to work with students. Students who would otherwise, um, not be able to learn in a classroom, possibly even be disruptive to other students in the classroom, lots of different reasons for them to be there. Um, and, but not, don't need a, um, more, higher trained, right? Like, there are some students who we have to send to places that have
Yeah.
differently trained staff, differently, um, licensed facilities. So this is within the school licensure.
Yep.
And we have had to expand our numbers over the years and how many students we can have in those program, in those, these alternative programs. And we have how many, how many K four now?
Eight.
We have eight, we're doubling it.
We're doubling it, yep.
So that's the, um, and my, my question was going to be, these students don't need additional support. This is the, at the same level of support that we're currently offering, or is this more intensive?
This is more intensive.
So this is gonna be level, level two.
Level two.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I like that, so, you know, it's more therapeutic, it's structured, um, and, um, it's a, it is a more differentiated educational en, environment. But there would, this is one part of the continuum. There will always be the need for us to, you know, um, at least get on the waiting list for Baird. You know, we do have some students that need that or other alternative programs, uh, they're, they're just, that's what they need.
Heather?
So is this meeting our current need students once, or is there more? Like, if we had more, we'd need more students to go to that program? Or is it eight, like, that all you can handle?
It's a great question.
Um, well, well, there's a couple of other things we're doing. So we really expanded our continuum. One, we've hired VCBAs, uh, forgive me about, I, forget the acronym, but these are trick people that supervise the behavioral interventionists and create plans for students. So we used to partner with Howard on that, but they don't have the resources or the people to do that now, so we created our own. And these are students that need something even more specialized. Uh, you know, I think it, it makes us, it, it fills the need a lot more.
And the answer is, we don't know until we have students next year. It would help us significantly this year, and hopefully it will meet the needs, but we don't know what's gonna happen with all of the, all of the groups that, you know, outside sources that we contract with, and how many spaces they're gonna have for us. And so there's so many factors. And so there's so many factors, so it will make it better.
Yes, much better.
Steve, you had your hand up?
That is my question.
Okay.
I'm just curious about the process. So we've got a program at Richmond, RES, a program at Smiley, it contributes to the whole district. So does, is it like an additional level of transportation? How do parents, you know, manage kind of the logistics?
We provide transportation. Sometimes it's specialized and sometimes it's, you know, we can make the bus, we're able to manage the bus routes. But this also gives us the opportunity to, like, have a K-2 and a 3-4. And that's, you know, more, that's probably better for students because of the, you know, just the developmental ages. So this gives us the ability to do that and really even have a more specialized program and differentiate it a bit more by age.
And then does the school identify potential students and make that recommendation? Is it a parent can advocate, say, oh, my kid in this program?
We have a process and criteria to get into the program. And it's, you know, it's a, it's, sometimes there's a fast track. Certainly a parent could say, you know, we want to access this. And for most of these students, you know, it's an IEP. So the IEP team would make, the individual education program team would make that decision.
Go ahead, Alston. So, just to clarify, the students who, I guess you can't say specifically, but those students very likely were off-campus somewhere this year and now they're coming back to MMU's campus next year.
No, they're in, they're in classrooms right now and they need more help.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, that's a great question. I mean, that's the whole reason why we're doing it is because they've, we don't have room and there's no room anywhere else, so.
Good job, John, you made this happen.
I'm trying.
Yeah, and to use the space in Smiley School, awesome too. Love to see that utilized differently, so congrats.
May I go to Susan?
Two other questions. So Edie, when you asked, is this more intensive than what we have now? What do you, I'm not sure I understood your question. Like, are you saying, is it, is the new program going to be different from what's currently at RES? Is that what you were asking?
Yes.
Is that how you understood it?
I'm not sure, but it will be very similar. Yep, it'll be very similar.
So it's not, it's actually just adding capacity, it's not changing what we got?
Okay, that's a good clarification.
Yep, that's a good question.
And then you probably don't know this off the top of your head, John, but my guess is that there might be some pretty significant cost savings by having an in-house kind of program. Do you happen to have a run?
Thousands, thousands of dollars.
Because I know it's very costly to sign.
It's very, very, and the cost's been going up.
And additions are not ideal.
Yep, that's a good, I wish I would have added that one. My blurb, it is, it is much more, it saves money.
And it's better for students to keep them in our district, right? Because then if they, when, they can transition back into the classroom, it's so much simpler. They're already familiar, right? Because, I mean, as we all know, transition is so complicated for kids and especially for kids with higher needs, transitions are more complicated. So there's a lot of benefit to doing it.
To be in our community whenever possible instead of outside of communities.
Yep. Yep, go ahead, Katie.
This touches upon what Heather was asking, but just to clarify, when it comes to, like, a waitlist, as you had mentioned previously, will we, do you anticipate that there's still a waitlist?
I hope not, but there.
We're not seeing any signs that the waitlist is getting decreased anytime soon.
And then I just wanted to add what you were saying, John, about an IEP team and just clarifying so everyone knows that a parent is a part of the IEP team as well. Do you make that decision?
Good point.
Yep, go ahead, Steve.
How does the faculty get selected compared, you know, is it based off need or is it just, you know, they were first on the list?
It's based on need. I mean, we have a pretty in-depth process to enroll, enrollment process, and.
If we had it today, it would be full.
Yep.
So we have students who we already are needing a place where they can get more intensive supports than in the classroom. And we're doing the best we can, but it would be better for them and for their classes if they have this more intensive support in a more defined area.
Yep, and we, I mean, do you, the, we don't move kids in and out. Like, if somebody has a bigger need, we gotta figure it out. But we wouldn't move kids in and out based on, if they're in the program, you know, there's a process for them to exit, so we wouldn't move them. If we had somebody with more need, we'd have to, you know, and it's hard to determine that anyway. Yes.
I'm just curious if there's an opportunity here, maybe you haven't thought about it or don't want to think about it, but is this a potential revenue source for other schools and districts?
If we had any open seats, we would, we would, we would offer them to districts to purchase. We talked about that, yep.
We've talked about this a lot. Go ahead, Katie.
And then to clarify, are we looking at a pre-K-2 at Richmond and 3-4 at Walton?
It is, I think we were looking at K-2, not pre-K.
K-2, okay.
A K-2, and then I think we had said too, just to give some flexibility, there would be, you know, 2-4 at Richmond so that we weren't locked in if we, you know, if we, gives us more options.
Okay, great.
Great.
Remote folks? I'm not ignoring you, I'm just not seeing any hands up. Okay. And James, normally we only take questions from the board. We had you jump in earlier and I know you're gonna be joining the board. Do you have a question?
I do, it's not in depth. You said you found room at Smiley. Is there any other empty classrooms in our vision?
Yeah, it's a complicated, there are no empty classrooms. There are classrooms that could be repurposed, but we are using every inch of every building for education.
And then we're just moving more out.
We need to build more houses. We would build them. We want them in our schools, yes. All right.
Just real quick, if this works out well, is there an opportunity to expand if we have the room to get more seats?
Yeah, I think so. You know, it's kind of been, it's been built over time and we've gotten, you know, much better at it, out of necessity. So yes, yes, yep. And then I don't, I'm not gonna read or give you enough that on the multi-tiered system of supports, let you know when graduation is.
And just for that, graduation is Saturday, June 15th. If it's outdoors, and we won't know that until the day before because of the weather, pretty much, please come. Everybody should come, it's really fun, it's really exciting, it's really, we always have some kind of musical presentation from students that is phenomenal. If it's indoors, it's more limited and it's gonna be here in the gym and there will be overflow seating and so it's, it's much harder to accommodate everyone. Students will get a limited number of seats. So if it's indoors, you can watch remotely.
If you're in outdoors, you're in your sunscreen, your lawn chair, and your hat, and your water bottle?
Yes.
From home, or in the house?
Or, yeah.
Wait, as someone that's gone through this year, it's so great to see all of the kids that have come through are, can graduate, and I highly suggest everybody attends. I mean, I think she ended.
It is great.
The real question is, does Gracie have to go to school on Monday and Tuesday?
Absolutely not. No, my exams will be all done.
Maybe we have a board member that, or a board meeting that Monday night and you can come to that. Tease it. Tease it for.
That's all I've got. Now, this is the sprint, I mean, really, I was telling Edie, we're, this is one of our busiest times of the year right now, everywhere. So our capacity is somewhat limited from now till June 18th.
I'm trying hard not to ask John to do any extras now that he has my full attention. All right, anything else on the superintendent report? We're good? Great. VSBA resolutions. So at our, Tara, correct me if I say anything wrong, at our June meeting, we need to vote on any resolutions that our board would want to send to the VSBA. So resolutions are what the VSBA focuses their time on and how they advocate for school districts at the State House. So the resolutions we voted on last year is what they're working on right now, including the task force to help all students, which is looking at how the Agency of Education and the State Board of Education could be meeting school needs better, right? So that's one of the, one of the things that they're doing right now. We, I have been in touch with board members at CBU to talk about a joint resolution possibly and what it's about. I am, escaped from my brain at the moment, I have it written down elsewhere. But this is our opportunity as a board to figure out if there are things that we want to work on, that we want to have the VSBA advocate for us. And normally at this meeting, if people are interested in doing that, we would send you off as an ad hoc committee to bring something back to us for the June meeting. Did I miss anything, Tara? Or Kevin, did you jump in?
No, and I was just, last Wednesday was put on the resolution committee for the VSBA. We spoke about it very, very briefly. It sounds like one of the resolutions that's gonna be put forward is to continue the task force because it sounds like their work won't be done in the short time that they've been given.
Yep.
But yeah, they were just encouraging the rest of us to go back to our boards and start the resolution conversation so that they would have something to review in July.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, I think also it's important for us to review the current resolutions, which carry over from one year to another. So you can also suggest that current resolutions be modified or rescinded towards new resolutions. So it's kind of a more comprehensive view on there. And I think from my perspective, I'd like to see a resolution that focuses on involving the school board more proactively in decisions made in Montpelier.
Are you offering to work on that? I'm sure I could get a couple of people to join you and help you with that.
Sure.
Any volunteers to work with Kevin?
I need you to say that again because I got really distracted by the echo, so I have no idea what Kevin said.
Kevin wants the VSBA to figure out how to ensure that school districts are more involved in the decision-making process in Montpelier and probably at the State Board of Education level because they are doing a lot of the rulemaking.
I'll volunteer for that.
Great. Katie, all right, so Katie, Tara, and Kevin want to work on that. And then, any others? Any other thoughts? Okay, if anyone thinks of anything that they want to work on, reach out. I'm sure there are other people who want to, who want to do that. Okay. Next agenda item is the superintendent evaluation process. And linked in the meeting are, is the evaluation and our procedures for it. So what we have done in the past is we meet an executive session and fill out the form together and add any additional comments that we want to be able to share with John. I know a lot of board members are brand new. We like to do this in February, but because the budget process took so much time and energy this year, a lot of things got pushed out. So, you know, in the future, we will continue to work to get this done in February before the board turns over. So just, if anybody has questions, what I'm, what I'm asking all of you to do is to read through that and be prepared for the next meeting so we can have an executive session. Come up, you know, write down, jot down thoughts that you have, things that, you know, John is doing really well, things that you want him to do differently as we're thinking about this, things that, as we're gonna have a new superintendent soon-ish, not too soon? Not too soon?
Thirteen months.
He's not counting. You know, think about those things in that light also, right? Like, what is, what is a need? What needs are being met right now? What needs are, you know, that we need to focus on for the district? Questions, comments? Yeah.
I seem to remember, and forgive me if I misheard, there was gonna be like more of a narrative to this piece. Like, you know, when I look at the actual evaluation, it's very much, you know, monitoring reports and, you know, like, three questions. And I know that that's really the board chairs place. Is that what you're looking for, sort of that narrative conversation? Or are you looking for this very specific?
I'm looking for the question-answer and I'm looking for, you know, more comments, narrative style from the board, yeah. And if you're looking through it and saying, you know, we haven't talked about this specific policy from our policy governance and this would be really helpful and why aren't we? Those pieces are really helpful too. You know, it would be, yeah. And I'm looking back at Tara again. We, but there are other policy governance folks here also. We've been doing a deeper dive back into policy governance and what we're doing well and what we need to do better as a board. And I think this type of evaluation is what we will be sticking with. Yes, no, looking at you all?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, because it's, as we're doing more policy governance.
I don't remember examples.
All right, well, Heather will bring us back. Heather will come back to the next meeting with that information. How's that? So I don't have to put you on the spot unless you have the answer right now.
I don't have the answer, I'll pass it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate that volunteering, Heather.
You were talking about PGE strike training and this last one was, and so I didn't think.
And you were, you were the only one of us who could actually.
No, I shouldn't, it was, it was just black. I just remember going, my takeaway from all this is like, isn't that fun stuff that we've been doing all along? You know, it's like when we are evaluating Richmond, don't evaluate on stuff he's not aware of. You know, it's like, as long as everybody's on topic with the questions we're asking, then we're doing it well. And if you want to ask different questions, we can do that next year, but we can't be, you know.
We will not be evaluating you on anything you're not expecting, to be that.
Next year will be a very important evaluation for me.
All right.
You're making your do-over.
You have to be somewhere here.
You're not proficient.
You're working on the standards.
But it'll be important with the new person, right? You need to, like, because you want them to have buy-in. And I had, I was able to give feedback on this and we really leaned into people that know way more about policy governance at the time than we did. And we'd made some modifications, but it was a collaborative. And that's really critical because you want the person to own it.
Yep, and that, yeah, that'll be part of the recruitment process also. So, all right, should we do some committee reports? We're ahead of schedule. Does anybody want to go back to anything else in the agenda? Go back to back.
We got other business.
Yeah. All right. Community engagement, any updates?
Yeah, we met last Monday and we reflected on the budget process and how that communication went with our communities. We felt good about a lot of what we did because we passed, right? That was exciting. And we sort of talked about things that we.
And we sort of talked about things that we could do differently or stay the same. And we talked about what the next budget cycle will look like and how to prepare our voters with things that are possibly becoming more difficult to imagine. So, you know, that communication might look like a quarterly communication and using our district happenings as a way to really highlight and outline what our budget supports in this district, and that's people power and really letting people outside of the school community understand who those people are and the impacts that they have on our students and how can our students graduate and be, you know, great contributors to our society. And so that's, I think you'll see in the last district happenings, some integration coming back to that and then we'll start again in the fall on how to really sell our budget to our communities and some of that, you know, in the process.
Great. And it'll be hopefully less driven by the committee and more full board, inclusive driving this process.
Yeah, and one other highlight, Allison mentioned, I think we're all agreeing on that, is to really talk about the state's role in these budgets and these changes, which we all know are, I mean, even just plugging people into what the conversations in the past two weeks have been will be a helpful part of history for next fall.
Thank you. Yeah, I know you didn't take these minutes, I don't think, but this is just a line of points, but I see that Gail was mentioned in the narrative, but he's not listed as present at the meeting.
Okay.
After we save the historical record. Thank you.
Edie?
Yeah?
I bought an alternate and the Monday at a clock meeting is almost never a possibility for me. So I don't know.
I think.
Yeah, we can talk about.
Talk about that and then we can figure out if that's not a committee that works to be an alternate on, I don't, there might be two, three, you might, we might have three alternates on that committee right now. And so maybe we can slot you in a different spot.
True.
Is that a pretty firm time?
It's been great for this year.
Yep.
But we didn't talk about changing that at the last meeting, doesn't even.
I don't know if you recall the.
Yeah, no, but it'd be great to get that feedback. And I sent an email out to the committee.
Okay, great. Tara? DEI?
The notes that are up here are inaccurate. I'm not sure who typed them up and provided them, but they're not entirely true. But the committee did meet on May 2nd. It was a quick conversation. We went over a couple of the goals that we had met by implementing training over the year, things that we're going to start to tackle at the next academic year, which will be historical markers and land acknowledgements. And the group decided to convene until August, September timeframe, at which point we'll pick up the land acknowledgement conversation and historical markers at our schools. Andrew Jones did give a quick update about what the Abar Council is doing. Their last meeting of the year is May 23rd.
And we'll have a full update for the board, I believe, at our June meeting on that. Is that right?
The next meeting.
At a next meeting.
It's the 20th, yeah, Andrew.
A week from today, thank you. Great, thanks. Lisa, finance and facilities.
Met and Nicole and Oberg, we bought it, which we passed. They did a, they picked one area to check for photo clients, which was food service this year and we passed with that. There are a couple of minor things that they're going to work on. And we also have a slight, some slight, a year-end outlay, which will be very good for a little, we have extra money in the budget, we'll see where it lands. But, yeah, we might have one more meeting before the end of this winter.
Great. HR committee met. We have not yet signed a contract with our search firm. When we do, we will make that public for the superintendent search. And then we are getting started, we will be starting into negotiations in the fall for the teacher contract and the support staff contract. So it will be a very busy year for that group. RAB?
The RAB met on April 2nd.
For people who don't know what it is.
Oh, regional advisory, so work with the tech centers. So there's Center for Technology in Essex and Burlington Tech in Brooklyn. And it sort of was really a presentation on what they call the comprehensive local needs assessment, so measures their goals and objectives. Seems like they're doing pretty well on those. There was a conversation about IRCs, which are industry-recognized credentials. One other sort of testing piece that they do is called the Workies test, which is a standard section through, I don't know if it's not SAP, but it's, you know, it's a, it's a three-test process that students take at all tech centers in the state. There's also a fair number of students to fast forward, which is like doing enrollment, so they're getting college credit for taking tech center classes. They talked about tuition. BTC's tuition is around $18,500. CTE is about $21,000. I didn't get into too many questions about the difference in those two. They're about 300 total students at CTE and 130 total students at Burlington Tech. Burlington Tech is adding its auto body program. I think there was a needs piece that I think most places are feeling like they want to train the person on site, but it was also cost-saving, so the auto repair instructor retired and the auto body instructor moved into that position. So it allowed them to keep balanced budget and that may be the reflection of the difference in costs, yeah, in costs. Burlington is getting a new school built. The BTC wing will have five programs there and they've also secured a new space at the airport for their aviation program. And then to finish with the conversation about the Agency of Education and the support or maybe lack of support, and there is a desire to seek some leadership there, especially around a little bit, which is questioning the governance, or the, where the things are coming from, so.
I did just share the documents from the RAB presentation with folks, so don't look at it now, look at it later. It's a lot, but it's really good and helpful. Did you have a question, Allison? I thought you were just correcting. Okay, and BSBA legislative, Tara, is that you?
Sure. So, right, last week we met in person and we had the interim secretary Zoe Saunders with us for about a half hour and she went through her 100-day plan, what she's been doing in the last two weeks and what her hope is as she's learning for mom and her job. It was a really, it wasn't much of like a back-and-forth conversation, but it was a lot of floor telling Zoe what we do and then Zoe telling us what she's been doing and what she expects to do in the next 100 days. Right, we talked, we got a report out from the task force, the Task Force on Collaboration to Benefit All Students, which was born from the resolution that was passed last fall. We had a quick conversation about resolutions and because the House was debating the yield bill, we wrapped up kind of early because people wanted to run over to the House and speak to our legislators about the yield bill. So it was a very exciting meeting.
Great. Final numbers on the yields ended up a little higher than what we, what we.
Okay.
Is that right?
Uh, yes, yes it is. Yeah, a little bit.
So which means tax rates will be a little lower than we presented to everyone, so that's great. And it's only a little.
Oh, yes.
I think it's super simple. I think it's totally easy to understand. I can't even keep all the numbers straight. Okay, any minutes? Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I have a first one.
You have a what?
Correction.
A correction to the minute?
Just Dave Marlowe's name, spelled two different ways. There's just a misspelling of his name a second time, it's mentioned.
Thank you.
I'm trying to correct it right now.
Thank you. Great. Any other discussion on the minutes? All in favor? opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, looks like the minutes are passing unanimously, going with the folks on screen, being all in. Go with that. All right, other business? Does any, thank you. Does anybody have other business? Yes.
Yeah, I just, I know it was announced a week or so ago, but I was on the search committee for the new activities director. I just wanted to compliment the staff and the students that participated in it. Very well done. We had a great pool of candidates. We brought eight individuals to the school for a full day of interviews and we were able to reduce that down to three, but I thought the process was great. I think, I think we landed, we had three incredible candidates and I think any, any one of those was a bad choice. And so I know we're really excited and I think, I didn't have a chance to, to Michael, but they did a great job in facilitating it, but I thought that was really well done. So it was a pleasure to be a part of that.
Can you remind everyone who was chosen?
Michael Abbott, and he is starting.
July 1?
July 1, yeah.
And he's from?
He was, his previous role Rice, and he was a, he wasn't the athletic director, he was like an associate or associate athletic activities director, but I think the staff and I think, I know the students really connected well with him. I don't know, if you have any?
I wasn't there the day that there was like student connection, but I did hear from Maureen that other students involved, but he was a really great connector and everyone really enjoyed spending time with him.
Yeah.
It was great.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think that just that we'll be focused on in terms of him being the face of Cougar Nation and, and, you know, the pool of candidates was exceptionally strong, so it was great to see that.
Thank you, Sue, for serving on the committee.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Giving me the opportunity.
Did I see a hand? Any other other business? Giving everyone a chance. So our next meeting is a week from today at Camel's Hum. It starts at 6:00, it starts early. We start with the Golden Apple Awards. There will be food, does that start earlier?
Yep, 5:30.
Food starts at 5:30.
You wasn't going to tell us that.
I was.
Tell me some.
I was. No, come for all of it. Come at 5:30 if you can. If you can't, come at 6:00. The presentation will be from 6:00 to roughly 6:30-ish, 6:45, maybe 7:00, but probably 6:45. And then we, after folks, we'll kind of reconfigure and we'll start our full board meeting. So often we don't have a full board meeting after the Golden Apple Awards, but this year we will because we didn't have any meetings last month.
Hey, Edie, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Do we have recipients from every one of our schools this year? Because last year we didn't and that was kind of disappointing.
I was not on the search committee, or on the committee.
I didn't back into.
I just sort of made that assumption, to be honest, there's a whole sort of slate that was presented.
Yeah, so not all the schools always make nominations and so it just depends on what's happening in that school. I like to be surprised the day of, so I really try not to read them before, that's just a neat thing.
I'm looking at it right now and I believe we do.
I think it is, I think we did this year. Yeah, pretty sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we had eight.
Yeah. Great. And we have three retiring board members?
Yep, we have a little.
So it will be full, it will be a full 45-minute meeting.
Do you know when the agenda for the board meeting portion is going to be? I haven't seen that.
The board meeting portion usually comes out on Thursday.
Oh, doesn't the agenda come out Thursday?
Yep. Yes. We will prepare it tomorrow or Wednesday and have it out on Thursday or Friday. So, last call, other business. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Does somebody have other business? Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, it sounded like there were some technical problems today and I, I'm wondering, I feel like I've heard the echo piece before and I'm just wondering if it's this room and because of the, like, I know sometimes like with volume and stuff like that.
We have heard it before in this room, you're 100%.
So just, I wonder if that's a consideration for meeting here.
Take a different, is there a different?
Or we could pick another room.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, we could use that one. I have on my, I put a little to-do list together and one of them is to follow up with Jeff and figure out echo.
If you need to get anything for testing, please reach out.
Okay, thank you.
And we, we might try the, the huntingkin room?
Why would we not?
Why not?
Motion to adjourn. Thank you. I think we have Kevin and Susan so moved and seconded and we'll let Pat figure out who was first and who was second. All in favor? Give me a thumb or a hand. Shut down and we will see you all next week. Thank you, everyone.
Have a great day.
Have a great night.
Tomorrow, too.